Okay, Special School Committee will now come to order. Can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Aguirre?
Here.
Mr. Coogan?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Cory?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mayor Carruth.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio/video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And a salute to the flag, which is here. Fly right.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ah, perfect timing. Okay. We do not have anyone signed up for citizen input at this time. And we have a number of items on the committee as a whole. And the first is discussion vote to reject all fiscal year 2020 transportation bids, and to rescind the vote to award contracts for transportation to the successful low bidders, which the bidders are there, listed. So we're here today to kind of clean house in terms of the, some cleanup that, in terms of the contracts, you know, with this being another five-year contract, and some of the things that the city's looking to achieve, and the school department's looking to achieve with the new bid specs and the new requirements of the buses. I think it was really important, and I think the committee attorney, as well as superintendent, would agree, and Mr. Pacheco, that the process going forward that we're taking action on today, after discussion, is probably what is best for the process. And that's why a special meeting was necessary, so that we can start that process right away, because we are approaching the summer, and we have to get the rebid out. And, well, it's actually a new bid. I wouldn't say a new, a rebid, but actually a new bid, which you have here. I'm gonna turn over to Attorney Assad, who's gonna give an overview of the legal process that he's undertaken for numerous hours over the last, what, seventy-two hours maybe, communicating with the Attorney General's office, the IG, et cetera. So I'm gonna turn it over to him for a brief overview, and then we'll go into the discussion and vote.
Thank you. Just like to go over some of the facts of where we are in the process right now, and where we are, and then present what I believe is the basis of why we're here today. First of all, back in February of 2019, there was a vote that was taken to award Tremblay Bus a contract. And in April of 2019, there was a vote by the committee to award the other three bids, Amorall, Whaling, and Fisher, and also having a total amount, at that time, of a budget of eleven point nine million and change. Then in the May meeting of the Fall River School Committee, there was a vote to rescind the transportation budget amount of eleven point nine million dollars. There was also a vote to approve a transportation budget not to exceed ten point one million dollars. In addition to which, there was an award of contracts for transportation not to exceed the ten point one, which included the Whaling, Amorall, Fisher, and Tremblay contracts. The City Council, as you may well know, in order to do a five-year contract, has to approve the contract. Although there was a vote, I understand there's a vote taken with respect to the Tremblay situation, the contract, there has been no vote taken with respect to the remaining three contracts for a five-year, for a five-year period. Pursuant to the thirty-B, as well as what the specs are stating, in the specs, the contract had to be awarded within a sixty-day period. Under thirty-B, you have an additional forty-five days, as long as there's an agreement between the parties. That one hundred and five days total expires today. And there is no vote by the City Council that there is a five-year contract. That is a substantive provision with respect to the bidding itself. The ordinances also, in terms of where we are, in terms of the award of the contract, as well as where we are in the process of actually completing our contract itself. There are two things that come into play with respect to the school committee making an award, and it's really subject to a couple of provisions. The first one is with respect to the ordinances for the city of Fall River itself, which is two point nine four one, required signatures on a contract. This has not been done for any contract, and it states that no contract between any party in the city shall be finally completed, valid and binding on the city unless previously signed by the mayor, the department heads, as well as the corporation council. Now, none of that has been done, so there is no contract that is validly binding on the city of Fall River at the present time. In addition, according to the Chapter Thirty-B, Section Nine, a procurement officer also has the ability to weigh in on a contract or on a bid, to determine whether or not it's in the best interest of a government body, and based on the determination made, can reject any and all bids or cancel the process itself. In addition to which, according to the actual bid specifications, the school committee is the awarding authority, and the school committee has the right to reject any and all bids at their discretion. That being said, right now, what we have is a situation where there have been several votes with respect to this particular transportation contract or specifications. With respect to it, as you well may know, there was a negotiation between the school department and the successful lowest bidders with respect to the specs. That is allowed under the guidelines of the Inspector General. However, there's a caveat, and that is that the negotiation is as to price only, and cannot have an effect on the scope of services rendered. Reviewing the documentation, reviewing the minutes, reviewing what has taken place, it's clear that the reduction in price from eleven nine to the ten one is had because there is a reduction in the amount of buses due to the fact of the tiering of the buses themselves. That is a substantive issue with respect to scope of services and the change in scope of services. That is concerning. The second situation is the fact that there is the lack of a five-year contract approved by the City Council. And with that, that is also a substantive issue with respect to the transportation contract. The decision that the school committee has today to determine is whether or not to look at all of the bids, look at it in terms of the scope of services, and if the scope of services have changed, look at it in terms of the date of award, and whether or not there is a completed award due to the fact that there is no five-year contract for at least three of the bidders, and in addition to which, there is no signed contract by the city, and the mayor, and the corporation council. The decision is whether or not it's in the best interest of the city of Fall River and the Fall River School Department to either go forward with the bids as they are, with the issues that we have, or to reject every, all bids, and to go out on a new bid in the best interest of the city of Fall River. The reasons again, I'll just summarize. We have a reduction in buses that is, could impact the scope of services, which is not allowed to be modified prior to any type of a contract being signed. There's a failure to award a five-year contract by the City, by the City Council. I'm not saying the City Council did anything wrong, within a hundred and five days, the hundred and fifth day is today. There's a reduction in price, but does not appear to have been attainable without a reduction in the amount of buses and a reconfiguration of the routes. And therefore, it becomes a situation as, is it fair, reasonable, for a new bid that has what the number of buses should be, what the configuration of the routes should be as we know it today? And that's the decision that the committee would be dealing with today. Yeah?
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Assad. That was an excellent overview of the situation. We appreciate your hard work on this issue. At this time, is there any discussion, or is there a move to vote?
A motion to rescind.
Okay, motion to rescind. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Questions? Mr. Martins?
In lay terms, so that everybody can understand what is going to happen, or should happen, that our only legal action, option rather, is that all bids be thrown out, and that, I guess this which was handed us today, these specifications become the new document in which a bid would go out for. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep, that's the simplest way to say it. Do you have something to add, Attorney Assad?
I didn't catch that last part when he said. I'm sorry, Mr. Martin. Basically, there are, as I mentioned, there are two options. There are significant concerns, there are substantive concerns about the process and how it's, how it's been conducted thus far in terms of how we get from eleven point nine to ten point one. The bottom line is, we're not budgeted for eleven point nine anywhere, in any budget, so that there is not enough money to enter into the contracts based on what the initial amounts were by the individuals. The ten point nine, if that was a reduction without a change in scope, would have been something that the school committee could have looked at. The issue is the fact that it's not a situation where it's a reduction without a reduction in buses and changes in routes, which were not part of the initial specifications. That's the issue.
Again, from my layperson information and understanding, that changes to the specifications were made, and thus, the legal option that we have is to, and which is not allowed, the only legal action that we have, is to throw out all bids, and then rebid the transportation in accordance with these new specifications, and that any and all contractors can bid on this new proposal.
That's a better summary than I gave, yes. The only other issue is that you still, this is a committee, this is a legal body, you can, you could elect to do nothing also, but I just throw that out there, the, based on what we have, what you have before you, you're correct.
The option of you can sit on your hands and do nothing, then leads you, leaves you open to court intervention, a lawsuit.
That's correct.
So my, my position is that that's not an option. So with that understanding, then, are you?
Thank you. Mr. Exler?
Yeah, I just, I wanna state that I'm not, I'm not happy in how the whole transportation process went down, and how we voted to, you know, we went out for bid, people bid, we found the lowest bidders, we were gonna award contracts, we voted to award contracts, and now we find ourselves in this position. We weren't happy with the outcome financially. We looked at different options. I believe, Mr. Pacheco, we thought, found a good option for us, was to lower everything substantially. We were gonna move forward, and I felt confident that that process was gonna move forward. Now we get the information that there are some issues, there are some concerns, and, you know, we had asked those questions, if there was gonna be issues or concerns, and that we had felt up until this point that there was nothing wrong with the way we went about doing things until now. So, again, I'm not happy with the whole process. I know that going forward, we'll have a better bid spec, because we'll have the tiering in place, we'll have a reduction in buses, so, you know, we should come in a little more favorably. Maybe not this one-year one, but when we go out to bid a year from now for a five-year contract, so, seeing no other option, I'm in support of rescinding and putting this bid out. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just, I concur with what my colleague said. I said it before, I think this whole process has been a mess, and it can, there's room for improvement, so hopefully going forward, we do have that, including, you know, some different documents today. My only technical question is on the agenda, it says to reject all bids and rescind. Is that technically the language that needs to be in the motion?
The, they would actually, what I would recommend, Mr. Aguirre, is, actually, there's two motions. One would be, if that was the position the committee wanted to take, was to be that the school committee reject all bids regarding the fiscal 2020 school bus transportation bid, IFB nineteen oh five, and the second one would be similar, but it would be nineteen oh seven, because there were, there was a, an initial spec, and then there was a rebid.
And how about the reject and rescind, or is that one and the same? Because on the agenda, it just says to reject all bids and to rescind its vote. Do we have to rescind the vote technically in a separate vote?
Separate votes.
So we would need three?
Well, what I would recommend on the first vote would be a motion be made that the school committee reject all bids regarding the fiscal year 2020 school bus transportation bid, IFB nineteen, colon, oh five.
Can I amend the current motion on the floor?
Second.
Right. So I'm gonna amend the current motion, so that it reads, the school committee reject all bids regarding the fiscal year 2020 school bus transportation bid, IFB nineteen oh five.
Okay, that's been made in the form of an amendment. We'll have to vote on the amendment. Roll call on the amendment. Oh, excuse me, was it seconded? Is there a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, it was, okay. Roll call on the amendment.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Cory?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth.
Yes. Okay, so, now on the amendment.
No, I'm sorry.
On the amended motion, Mr. Aguirre, you still have the floor. Do you yield?
I yield.
You yield, okay. Yeah, I'll echo the same thing as my colleagues, as, as you will recall, I was joined by Mr. Aguirre in voting against that particular bid process moving forward. The process was just, it just was messed up. I really don't know how we got here. I hope that we get some answers. We have to move quickly to ensure that we have our transportation in order for the new school year, but this process, and just the changes that are here before us today in these bid specs are significant. And if that was what was going on, I don't know why this committee was constantly and consistently told, nope, we can do this this way, we've checked, it can be done, and we're here today at another special meeting with totally different information. And I don't understand, because that doesn't happen very often, if ever, on the city side, where we publicly, on television, give the public one set of information, and I won't even see we, the school department gave the public one set of information, and here we are, months after this was already discussed to be rebid, new bid, whatever you wanna call it, and now there's totally different information. It strikes at the credibility of the information every time we speak it, and that's a serious problem that needs to be fixed by the school department moving forward. And you need to give consistent and accurate information, and it can't be one day, you can negotiate special needs transportation outside of thirty-B, and then the very next day, oh, no, but we have McKinney-Vinto money in that account. It just, it's not right, it's not a good process, and it really hurts the bidders, because they get confused, people lose out, and it hurts the community, and it hurts the city, and it hurts the process, and it hurts everyone's credibility. So I'm really disappointed with the way that this was handled, especially when numerous red flags were waived, number of months went by, those red flags were, were, you know, not fielded, and I don't blame this committee by any means at all, because we were being told, nope, this information's accurate. So that's something that really has to be reflected upon going forward, because that is not fair to anyone at this table or the community. So with that, I'll yield as well, and we can take the vote. Unless some of the comment, Mr. Coogan?
Mr. Chairman, I thought you changed the amount from nine point three to ten point one. You said you wouldn't go above nine point three in your budget, but you put ten point one in.
Mr. Coogan, that has nothing, the budget number that I submit to the City Council has nothing to do with the way that the bid specs are.
No, I'm talking about transparency and accuracy. You, you told us you weren't gonna go above nine point three at all, that would be in the budget, and you put ten point one in. So that wasn't entirely an accurate statement you just made. You changed things too, and I supported your change, I was with you.
Mr. Coogan, we're not gonna get into a political debate here, that's not where we're here.
No, it's not political, it's factual.
It is political. When we are talking about having a meeting that has a rebid with bidders in the audience, as I stated at that meeting last time you brought this up, the city would not reveal what its highest price that we were willing to pay. We stated that our budget was gonna carry nine point three, because that is the number we paid last year. It would not be accurate and not be prudent, or make any financial sense, for the city to reveal prematurely what number it was willing to pay. We were told that you could negotiate down, as this committee was told, negotiate down the bids. We were told that by Mr. Pacheco, the superintendent, as well. That information has come back to us today as either not accurate, or so convoluted that we have to sit here today again to rebid the entire process. It is not the city's fault that that bid spec is so convoluted that we're sitting here once again. The number nine-three that I put in the budget, and we're not gonna continue this, I'm gonna move on, but the number that we put in the budget of nine-three was a temporary placeholder, which I stated at this meeting, a temporary placeholder until the final number was revealed. I had stated consistently that eleven point nine million was unaffordable, and that that bid spec should be totally rejected for new bids, because eleven point nine was non, it was a nonstarter, the city cannot afford nine, eleven point nine. It was then told this committee repeatedly, we can negotiate the price down with the successful bidders, which the process was so convoluted, and the information was so inaccurate, that that's why we're here tonight. That's the only point I'm gonna make on that, and we're gonna move on.
Well, that's not entirely accurate, and I'm, I hope that that speech helps you, but it doesn't allay anybody's fears. You stomped your feet and said, I'm not gonna put a dollar above nine point three.
Excuse me, Mr. Coogan. I will not tolerate, excuse me, Mr. Coogan.
And then you went to ten point one, and everybody knows it, so I don't know why you're still claiming that you won't.
Mr. Coogan.
But I'm willing to move on too, it just be accurate.
Mr. Coogan. We're gonna move on, but let me make it very clear. This administration did not stomp their feet.
Sounded like it.
They protected, they protected the process, they protected the precious dollars that taxpayers put up to pay for all necessary transportation and school education. That's what we did, and we were told that that number dropped from eleven point nine to ten point one. That's what this entire committee was told. And we had made an agreement that the city would then come up with the additional money from nine-three to ten point one. However, we're sitting here tonight because that process was so convoluted that it was not correct. That's why we're sitting here tonight.
And I'm just saying, you were part of the process.
Mr. Chair, move the question, please. Thank you. We'll move the question to a vote. Roll call. Thank you.
Can you clarify what we're voting on? We're not voting on the move the question, right? We're voting on the actual item.
No, we're actually voting on the, what's on the table.
What, which item is this?
This is the item to rescind.
Mr. Aguirre?
I believe this is the nineteen oh seven.
Nineteen oh five. This is the nineteen oh five, correct?
I think we did that one already, I think.
We didn't. We only approved the amendment.
Yes.
So now we're approving the whole thing. Right, it's five.
Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Cory?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. The school committee reject all bids regarding the fiscal year 2020 school bus transportation bid, IFB nineteen oh seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Cory?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make another motion. To rescind the school committee votes to award contracts for fiscal year 2020 school bus transportation to the lowest bidders, Amorall Bus Company, Whaling City Transit, Fisher Bus Incorporated, and Tremblay's Bus Company LLC.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded?
Question.
Question. Mr. Aguirre?
I believe that Tremblay was already approved by the City Council, and that's in effect.
It is not in effect, it has not been signed. Contract can only be in effect if it's signed.
Attorney Assad, may you?
I'm sorry?
Can Attorney Assad weigh in on that, because that information isn't what was in the?
Cory, Mr. Aguirre, according to the regulations and the ordinances of the city of Fall River, no contract between any party in the city is finally completed unless signed by the mayor, the school committee, majority of the school committee in this particular case, and is executed by the corporation council as to form a manner of execution, which has not been done.
So where is it held up?
It's held up in our office. We weren't gonna sign a document when we're gonna back out for one-year bids, so we're gonna go back out for all one-year bids, and this speaks to what I was talking about earlier. We had been consistently told that the Tremblay's contract was special education, and that it was exempt from thirty-B. That apparently is not the case. So again, this school administration has consistently told my office and this body information that's not accurate.
That, I'm not so sure of.
That's what we discussed yesterday.
So Attorney Assad read something about where it needs to be, or last meeting, or whatever the time is, I think it was held up in the purchasing department or something like that? That's what we were told last time?
That's correct.
Purchasing.
All of the contracts that are on our side were held up in purchasing, because there were major concerns.
And I thought Attorney Assad said something about corporation council. It's just news to me, quite frankly, so.
Which part is news to you?
The Tremblay piece. When I look at the agenda that's been put out for this meeting, it says reject the low bid as Amorall, Whaling, and Fisher. Doesn't say anything about Tremblay's. So we haven't gotten any information. I was aggravated two months ago, when I found out on the stage that we had an issue with that contract in the first place. And all along, we're talking about, whoa, we're gonna do, we're gonna rescind the thing for buses, now we're gonna approve busing. I don't even know is, is, not to jump ahead, but is the vans inside of this? The next piece?
Superintendent, you wanna weigh in here? I mean, you're sitting here silently.
Well, I just walked in, ma'am, to all due respect and fairness. This has been a lot of work, and my people deserve respect, and they worked their butts off on this. So I don't wanna point fingers and say blame on anything, I'm not in that game, just wanna say we're working in the best interests of the committee, and the city, and the school system, and we'll continue to do that. The question that you're asking is, the first part of the agenda was to reject what you approved on, all bids, transportation bids.
Superintendent, we voted on that.
I get that.
Ms. Aguirre's question is, are the vans in the new bid specs? That was his question.
Yes, yes. So, door-to-door, in district, and McKinney-Vinto, yes.
For the vans?
Yes.
For the Tremblay issue? And, so it's not on here? I mean, I think we, we're, I'm assuming we're fine, because we're talking about all bids and the specificity of other companies that Tremblay's is not on here, but I'm just concerned that, never mind the regular buses, the vans, we might have no transportation come start of the school year, the way this is going. And I, for one, have advocated for, the bus, the van contract was a large contract, and quite honestly, I disagree with the, you know, corporation council, or anybody that's holding it up. When we vote, the city council votes, it's not, it's supposed to be held up if it's in, looked at for whatever the legal terminology is in manner, and whatever the legalese of it, not because somebody felt like it was their opinion to just hold it up. That's, I have a problem with that piece. This body voted to give that five-year contract, the council voted to give that five-year contract. If that contract's not being held up, in my mind, for legalese, just because of an opinion, I don't really, I don't really like that, and I don't think it's helping this district get transportation for our students for the next foreseeable future.
Yeah. So let's, let's, let's take that issue for a second, Mr. Aguirre, because I think it's important that it's, you know, on the table. So Attorney Assad, you wanna weigh in on regards to the reason that Tremblay's contract may also be convoluted with regards to McKinney-Vinto being in it, and it being a process that was bid, and although it didn't have to be bid, once it's bid, that's it, you can't change it?
My understanding, again, is that, very similar to the other contracts, the, the actual reduction in the bid price is not just based on price, but based on, on other matters, including vans and, and routes.
And because, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong.
And also, and also.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, my understanding is that, once something that is exempt from Chapter Thirty-B is bid... B, is bid, you have to follow the bid process.
Oh, correct. That's correct.
Which was not, once again, described to this committee, as far as I know, and certainly wasn't described to the city, and the city decided, after looking at it, at the contract, that we were not going to sign what would be considered an illegal bid process that could be easily challenged. You still have the floor, Mr. Agia.
I'm a little more confused than I was earlier today, but the issue is, what do we do now? So if we rejected all bids, including the buses, we're at, we don't have anything. So at that point now, because it sounds like as if somebody down there said it was, had to be 30B, not 30B, back and forth. If special education transportation doesn't have to be bid and it can be negotiated or solicited, whatever you want to call it, without that process, I'm not sure why we don't just do that.
Superintendent?
I yield for the superintendent.
McKinney-Vento is weaved into that, and McKinney-Vento falls under 30B. It's a cleaner process to go with what the recommendation is and bid all four.
To reject all four?
Reject all four and bid. So we worked very hard. I know we haven't presented the specs and those things yet, but you'll see in that that the, we've done everything that was expected of us in terms of timing, routing, specs, and getting to what we feel is a very good competitive bid spec for a one-year contract, as, which will also, and I just want to be clear to the committee, which really gives us the time to get even better with the software, with the additional routing, and get to a place where we go out for long term, that I feel confident that we'd be in a much better place than we are, would be now, and that's why I'm recommending the one year.
So you understand my point of looking at this, that Tremblies was new to me just on the, just now, correct? Am I, if you look at the agenda that we had received for the meeting, it only indicates the Amaral, Whaling, and Fisher. So I think possibly new information just came to light as people were kind of getting ready for this meeting, where we had to add Tremblies into that. Otherwise, it would have been in here all along if it was that matter of fact.
Well, the language says to reject all fiscal 2020 transportation bids. So to reject them all and then go out for the new bid, I think that language covers that in the agenda.
Yeah. I mean, I'm going to vote for it because I think we have no choice, but I'm going to be interested to talk about the specs and how, what's the best way to lock in some transportation along the way. The McKinney-Vento piece, mixing it in, I'm going to have questions on that too, but I don't think it's on this agenda item, so I'll yield for now.
Other questions? Mr. Hetzer.
A few questions about Tremblies contract. Was that, and forgive me for not remembering, is that the one that came in lower? Of all the bids we sent out, one came back lower? Right? It was the only one, right? So, I mean, that sounds great to me. I'd love to go with it. But again, we're concerned with some legal, maybe some legal issues, and that is why we're going to rescind that, correct?
Yes.
Attorney Assad, you want to weigh in?
Does that make sense?
The, uh, just so that I understand what's being discussed over here. With respect to the Fisher, I'm sorry, the Tremblies bus contract, there is no contract yet, okay? The, uh, until a mayor signs a contract, it is not binding on the city of Fall River. Until that process is had, if it is determined that the contract is not in the best interest of the city of Fall River, it can be, it can be rejected.
Okay. I hope it comes back in right where it's at and not any different, you know, obviously divided by five, because at this point, it's only going to be for one year. But I would hate to lose that considering it's already going to be a savings if we had went with it. With that, I yield.
Mr. Martins.
The transportation specifications have a front page and an ending page. In between there, there were subsections to it. The motion is to reject all bids, which thus then you cannot pick and choose one section versus another section. It's the bid process, you know, inside there as far as applying for the vendors in there, of which case the motion being to reject all bids, which includes all of the people, the contractors that submitted proposals in there. I think that's only fair to then reject, to make sure it's rejecting all and that all contractors have the option of determining, I want this portion or that portion in there, and we'll take that into consideration and award new awards to those contractors with lowest bids.
Thank you. Further questions? Mr. Agia.
I want to ask Attorney Assad, and it doesn't have to be right now because I'm sure he hasn't researched this, but if you could put...
Could you speak into the mic? I have trouble hearing you, Mr. Agia.
So I'd like to ask Attorney Assad to review, and we can't obviously have this right now. When a school committee votes for a contract, the city council votes for a contract, can you get us a document that details what's the right and the duty of a mayor? And it's not being critical of this particular mayor. I'm just looking at it as a general rule.
We did look into that. He has the answer. We looked into that. Attorney Assad?
You want me to get you something that says what the obligations of the mayor?
No. So when the city council votes, the school committee votes for a contract, city council, uh, school committee votes, city council votes.
Correct.
Does a mayor, doesn't matter whether it's this mayor, have a right just to say, "No, I don't want to sign that contract"? And I think that there should be, if there's not, then we got to look at it across the city, that when two legislative bodies agree with something, there's no provision to just say, "Oh, I veto it. It's not a budget item," but it shouldn't be just out there like in space that, okay, the mayor just decides to, you know, in his opinion, the opinion of the council and the school committee on contracts should mean something.
I don't disagree with you, but the ordinances are rather clear. There is no contract unless a mayor signs it, as well as the others.
So if he just, on any issue, just the mayor says, "I'm not signing it," then it just goes on? Like, I mean, that's crazy.
Well, I guess if you carry it to the nth degree, you could try to take the court and say there was some nefarious reason why it's not signed, but other than that, there's no question. The, uh, the ordinance is very clear.
It's really not part of this. If you can just get that to us in writing?
Sure.
Just in, over the next week or so, and I think the ordinance committee should take that up because, like I said, all due respect to this mayor, I'm not trying to be critical of him personally, but that's crazy. When two legislative bodies vote for a contract and a mayor can just say, "Ah, to hell with it. I don't feel like doing it," or "I don't like it for whatever reason." That's not, that's not the reason why we vote on these things. So something should be different with that. With that, I yield.
It is, it is right here, Mr. Agia, so we can get a copy. It's section 2-941, required signatures approved by corporation counsel. So we do have the language right here from the charter, if you'd like to see it. You know, on this particular issue, once again, I want to make it very clear, this was not signed because of the legal issues that surrounded it. The city, despite the fact, and I totally agree with you, despite the fact that this body, as well as the city council, approved that particular contract, we felt in purchasing in corporation council's office and in consultation with Attorney Assad and the superintendent that this process was so convoluted even on that particular contract, after speaking to the attorney general's office and the IG's office, that it should also be rejected and not signed. If I had signed that contract, there could have been a bid protest, and that may have been an illegal contract. That's why in this particular issue, this contract was not signed. So I want that to be very clear.
Yeah, I disagree. It's okay. Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa. Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Carrick.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the school committee vote to refer the fiscal year 2020 transportation budget not to exceed 10.1 million to the city council.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Seconded. Discussion. Mr. Agia.
What is this?
Couldn't hear it.
You want to repeat the motion, Mr. Hetzer?
I'll repeat the motion. The motion is to rescind the school committee vote to refer the fiscal year 2020 transportation budget not to exceed 10.1 million to the city council. It's just a little bit of housework.
It's not on the agenda per se. It's a motion that's being made on the floor.
Right. So the first item says discussion and vote, reject all bids, which we just did. And then there's a, it says, "And to rescind its vote to award contracts to the low bidders." We did that already? Or we just have...
This is just to clean up, because we sent to the city council a number to be approved, and that's obviously going to change because we're going to go back out to bid. So we're just cleaning that up.
And why is that necessary?
If I could, if I could weigh in, just based on Robert's rules, Mr. Agia, in terms of we have a vote on and basically to rescind the vote, if in fact you chose not to rescind the vote, the vote would stay on. It wouldn't have any effect because of the first two votes that were taken. But it's just to clean up the record. That's, it's just Robert's rules.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't see the need for it personally, but we have to have a number. There has to be a number that's been sent from the school department to the city and the mayor. So if we rescind the vote to send whatever we sent, what would we be sending in our budget? That's the way I'm reading it. So if we took a vote to say, "We're going to put a number in, not, transportation not to exceed 10.1 million," if we rescind that vote, what number then therefore goes into the budget that they're deliberating and we're presenting next Tuesday? If we rescind this vote?
Mr. Chair.
Is there a point of order, Mr. Martins? Mr. Agia saw the floor.
I understand that. Rescinding, well, maybe this is discussion, so I'll wait with this.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent, would you like to weigh in?
On the Robert's Rules question, to rescind the earlier vote, the, I believe the budget has already been set and will be deliberated on, so the mayor appropriates a budget. It's being deliberated next Tuesday. There are figures in the operating and transportation budget that are there. I think on, in this regard, the question you're asking, what number will be there? The number that will be there is the number that's there, but since we are going out to bid, there may be some movement. And he, I think what he, the term that he would, that school committee, Hetzer, was using was not to exceed the 10.1.
No, I get it. I'm not trying to be difficult here, but if you're telling me that it's going to be 10.1, and we go out to bid, and the bids come in after the budget gets done, like any other contract, you have to put more money in at some point, or less money, whatever, it has to adjust in July. So if Attorney Assad thinks this is what we need to do for Robert's rules, we'll go with it. I have no problem with it because, but I really don't think it means anything. With that, I yield.
Mr. Martins.
I think the, my position was addressed right here, so I...
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa. Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Carrick.
Are there motions to be made on this particular topic? Mr. Martins?
This motion is, we're under school transportation, correct?
So the next topic would be discussion vote to approve the revised invitation for bids.
All right. Then I'll wait until after that.
Well, I make a motion to approve the revised invitation for bids for the fiscal year 2020 school bus transportation, as we'll see is presented by Mr. Kenneth Pacheco, chief operating officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded on the motion. Questions? Mr. Agia.
Can we get a presentation? Members of this committee, you have in your packets a few items. One was a list of things that were moved from the previous bid because it was only a one-year. You have that in front of you. I can address any one of those if you'd like, rather than just read items that you have in front of you. Those are the highlights of the budget, of the spec, with the exception of the year change. In those items, the spec remains the same.
Mr. Agia, go to the floor.
Yeah, so I think it's just important because of the, a lot of people are here, a lot of people are watching that. Would you like me to read them? If you could please read them, and then I'll ask a question on one or two of them. Absolutely. Okay. So the first item is reduce the bid term from one year to one year from five. The second item is revise school bell schedule in order to increase tiering. Increase multiple school routing and scheduling, reducing number of buses estimated for 2019, 2020. Reduce the number of bus monitors respective to the bus reductions. Reduce insurance requirement from 10 million to 5 million for excess liability. Eliminate parking of buses within 10 miles of the city limit. Eliminate age requirement for school buses and vans. Relax the specific... Sorry about that, specificity of the sizes of buses required, 71, 77, 47, 29. Revised fuel adjustment to 10 cents from five. Eliminate the COLA because it's only a one-year contract. Revised alternate, one single vendor option and alternate to multi-vendor option to allow up to four vendors for the entire contract. Removing the routing software requirement to only a REED access, which the district will provide. Integrated previous 14 addendums, so all the specifications that we've had before, we're redoing that, and in this document is those revisions already made. Reduce camera requirements from three cameras to two. Remove the GPS requirement. Increase maximum response time to accidents and breakdowns from 20 minutes to 30. Revised timeline for provisions of bus fleet information form at time of bid submission to prior to the start of school. And the only other thing that would need to be upgraded is a new prevailing wage rate, which we haven't issued, we haven't had. It needs to be issued close to the bid. So number eight, the relaxed specificity of size of buses? Yes. Can you talk about what that means? So basically, originally, we had had it kind of very specific. So we're opening it up, so if someone has 71-passenger buses, as opposed to the smaller buses, they would be able to use those 71-passenger buses. And vice versa. Try and get more people to bid. Exactly. While trying to make it easier for those who have equipment. I read some language, just, I think what's highlighted in yellow is the new? Yes. The reduced bell schedule. Some of it matches here. So some of that highlight. Reduce, number two, revise bell schedules in order to increase tiering. I want to say that this is what we know right now, the numbers. So the bell schedules, the bell schedules that, yeah, so in the specs are reflecting the new tiering with the new bell schedules. We have some that are proposed tonight that are on the agenda for a vote later on. However, all the ones, they are all in there. So there probably would not be any major, like we had this time. There would be no changes from this point forward. And then once the school year starts, we have less kids, that stuff happens. Exactly. The addendums are all included? The addendums are included in the document now and not as an addendum. They've been repaired. They've been replaced. So when I look at the timeline of the bid release and all, this is as tight as it can get? That's as tight as it can get, yes. If you made an addendum between now and the time that the, like the bidders meeting, can't some things be changed? Yes. Yeah, so we would, so the addendums would be the change, and we would issue them. If someone picks up the document, it's a short window between picking up the document and the bidders meeting. But if someone had something before the bidders meeting, we would try and upgrade it then and have an addendum ready, and anything at the bidders meeting that was discussed would be immediately sent to all of the bidders. Somebody came up, looked at this, and then came up with a bright idea to say, "If we did X, Y, and Z, we can make, this makes more sense." We could still change it from here. So it's not a be-all and end-all. Yes. The only question or concern that I would have is the, where you say you got to have four people. Because it's a one-year contract? Yes. And because of the, you know, one person's got to do specialized one, I understand the reason why. Now that we added the vans into that, I think that that might be a problem if we don't relax that requirement a little. I don't know how to rectify that, quite honestly. The issue is, is we, once we, once we relax that, then... The issue is, is we, when, once we, once we relax that, then there'll be no tiering in that area. Anytime we have a double, a double contractor in any one of these specific silos, you eliminate the tiering possibility, unless those two companies are willing to work hand in hand. I have not seen that, so I'm gonna say that, that unless we keep them in silos, we're not gonna be able to tier.
Right, in here, I read something along the lines of, uh, "Company has a one-tiered number." I think that's how we currently bid it, it might be in the pages, how we currently do, like, a one-tier, you get $388, or $288.
Yes.
Two tiers, or the vice versa, one is, the second one is a little lower.
Right.
So, is that not in here at all?
It is. So, you, you will still tier the same way, but if you have two separate companies, that means that there are going to be multiple companies going, doing the same work in different schools. So, unless they can only bid on a particular tier, and they're willing to stay within those parameters, which, that's a very difficult thing to control in the bid document.
Correct.
Then, we're not going to be able to tier. Because if company A bids on a particular style of van, doing a particular job, and company B bids on some of that work, then now we can't tier them.
Yeah, I understand the rationale, I just, if there's a way to have a little bit of flexibility on that, I don't know if that's like alternate bids, or I don't know all the terminology, but I do think that that would help if, I'm looking at Plan B. This comes out July something, July 11th, public bid opening, and school starts at the end of August, or whatever. We're in a real tight timeframe.
We are.
What happens when no, if nobody bids, or there's nothing here? Do we have any other flexibility, would be my...
Well, again, uh, with the exception of McKenney-Vento, we would, we would remove, obviously, at that point, when we have a gun to our head, we would remove all of the special ed and negotiate that with, I'm sure there's five vendors in the room that would like to sit down at the table and negotiate a contract without a bid process. So, I think that, that we would probably be able to do that. And then, the only, um, one bid that we would have an issue with would be a combination of regular ed transportation and the McKenney-Vento piece. Which would have to be bid out 30B, and we'd have to go off of this.
And the vans being one, you know, huge amount of vans, that is, would give me a little heartache if not many people have that many vans, or whatever. So, if we split it up, we would, might have a better option. The, the schools that don't have tiering at all?
Yes.
You know, with it, they're off the table. Is that a one? When we see the document that says, I don't have it in front of me, but there's five schools that don't have any tiering, but there was no time changes, rather, but...
There were no time changes, but they're also, they may be tiered on something, but not something else, because the times wouldn't work.
So, it's not like they not being tiered at all?
Um, and there were some, the schools that don't have buses.
Right.
So, so it would be out of the question, right.
If, like, and I think you already answered this, if there was time to look at things more, and whatever, other things came to light, we can change it with an addendum.
When a contract is awarded, then we have the opportunity to negotiate.
But, I mean, even before the bid, bid is meeting and stuff, if we're...
We could do, I mean, there are some changes that we would be able to make. The, the document, this is, um, two and a half days' worth of work, and fortunately, we had a lot of documents that we were able to use, um, because not all the language changed.
Correct.
Um, but we did put in new routes, so some of the new routes are in here also, um, the tiering process is in here, so the bus reduction is already built into this. So, they're not bidding on what they were bidding on last time, they're bidding on the reduction. And all of those reductions were made possible by the companies who bid. They did all the heavy lifting, and what we did was, we put it all, all pieces together. So, the companies, again, um, deserve a lot of credit for doing the work that they did.
I understand. My last question, I think in the past, we had contracts that said at the end, "Subject to our vote, we could increase it for one year," or, like, two one-year extensions or something, is that, has that ever happened, or how?
I didn't put it in here, uh, we put this in as a one-year, um, because I think that in, by mid-year, um, this, the school year coming up, by mid-year, we will be looking to go out to that larger bid, and we will have the documentation along with, um, any enhanced routes and any other savings that we could come up with.
But it can't happen, is that...
It can, absolutely.
So, I would, I would like to recommend that we do that at our decision. So, let's say the bids come out, and company A is work, whatever, A, B, and C has the contract, they're working very well for the year, they're cooperating, they're helping, they're, everything's going great, and they have a one-year contract. Why would we not just then have the option of saying, "Okay, we can do a one-year or two-year, you know, one and one-year extension," if, so we would avoid this whole process again, potentially? But if it wasn't, or we had a better thing, then we could go out for. Like, I think we'd hold the cards in those, that situation. And I just don't know how that would work on...
I'm not sure on that, and I wouldn't be able to answer whether or not we can do an extension.
But that would be something that you could add as an addendum, potentially, if you reviewed it after, correct?
Sure.
I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hetzler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the tiering's in here, and...
Yes.
Hopefully, that'll look better in the middle of the year. Like you said, it could be realized savings for the next bid that goes out, um, and all the price reductions that were worked out through the previous bid process should be evident, uh, moving forward. Is this gonna be sent to all the vendors? Again, like, not just, uh, the vendors who bid, but it's just gonna get sent out?
It's, it's an open bid, so it's, it's gonna be advertised and comp buys, it will be on the central register, and, um, anyone who, who received the last bids, I'm, my assumption is, is that we will probably get those requests.
All right, and, uh, the document we have before us today, this is public record, is it not, this, these specifications? And we're not gonna release these, it says, uh, the 26th?
Because we have to go through the process, so I do have to advertise first, and comp buys, and all of the, the process.
Right, so...
This, this document is our end.
Right.
There's still a city side of this document that has to go on, we call it the front end of this.
Okay.
Uh, with cities, with the city pieces to it. So, this is what, this is what was prepared for the committee tonight, because this is the actual specs. The rest of it is standard boilerplate pieces that will be added to this.
So, would it help us if we could send this draft to all the companies, or available to companies who are interested in bidding, knowing that this bid process is gonna be coming up, that way they have an extra two weeks to start looking at this?
I'm not sure, um, the legality of that, so I, I won't comment on that.
All right, well, if, if someone has an answer, that'd be great, if not...
This, like you said, Mr. Hetzler, I'll just weigh in on this, this is a public document, somebody wants to do a Public Information Act request, they can to get a heads up, but Mr. Pacheco can't publish the bid until you can get it into the system, which is, looks like the 26th is the earliest you can do that.
Okay, so, again, they could get a heads up on it, which I think, you know, could be advantageous to us, if, if we wanna get these bids in, in that short amount of time. All right, with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martins?
Mr. Pacheco, what is the purpose of item number six?
So, um, the city had, in, in previous contracts, bus companies needed to be located in the city or within a 10-mile, um, radius of the city. And the reason for that was, is response time, so you don't want a bus company from Western Mass bidding on your contract and not having a bus available when you have a breakdown or something like that. So, we relaxed that, um, to within 10 miles. Because I think in the last bid, if I'm not mistaken, it was preferable that you're in the city, but the distance was not...
Well, it says, "Eliminate parking of buses within 10 miles of the city."
Right, so we would be able to say now, that if we consider, if, if you put hand in hand, okay, what you need to do is take a couple of these and put them together. So, if you look at the, um, number 16, if a bus company can respond to number 16, that would mean that they were within a certain distance. If they couldn't respond to 16, then they can't, then the bid is no good. If they, if they're located in Brockton, they're not gonna be able to respond to number 16. So, that was the reason why we relaxed that number, because that number could be, if we went 13 miles or 12 miles, we would be, we would be eliminating companies from bidding if we did that. So, what we're saying is, is the response time is what's important to us.
Okay, Mr. Pacheco, um, you didn't let me finish.
I'm sorry.
But, uh, the word "eliminate" means no parking of buses within 10 miles of the city limits. That means Tremblay Bus cannot park its veh, its vehicles.
The word, the wording is different, I'm sorry, Mr. Martins, I shouldn't say it that way. What it meant was, we didn't require them to park within the 10 miles of the city. That was what that meant.
All right, that means, you, you need to change this, because it...
This document is only ours. This document is for your purposes only.
Oh. Okay, because of the fact that, that within 10 miles, you got Tremblay, and if they can't park here, then, and you have Wailing City within 10 miles.
That wasn't the intent. I understand what you're saying.
All right.
My apologies, that wasn't, that's not the intent, I'm sorry.
So, you're gonna change that?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, I yield.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, seeing none? Is a motion that's been seconded?
Yes.
Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Aguirre? So, uh, based on Mr. Hetzler's, uh, comment, when I, and I do agree that this is a public document because it's here, I'd like to make a motion that we post this, and this package of information that's been given to the committee on the Fall River Schools website for anybody to review.
Okay, is a motion made, is there a second?
Second with, uh, a comment?
Yep.
Just, we can reflect on that, if we upload it online, that it's a draft, obviously, and that's, you know...
Well, I would, I would ask that if this is gonna be done that way, that it is a draft, because if there are any corrections that need to be made before this document goes out, that we would like to have the ability to make those, and that it would not reflect.
Superintendent would like to weigh in?
So, point of order, any item that comes before School Committee in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is a public document, if it is reviewed and accepted, and is perfectly, uh, uh, compatible with the, uh, with the, uh, request for information law, or whatever it's called. In this regard, this information shared, we could put this on our webpage, as we do with many other pieces of information, but I wanna be clear, that in no way are we putting out a bid. That process will happen concurrent with this, this is the sharing of the public information that we've shared with the, uh, with the committee.
I agree, wholeheartedly. It's just information that was passed out.
Yep.
Doesn't have to say it's a bid or anything, but truth in advertising, everybody should get a chance to look at this and be fair. Thank you.
Okay, the seconded, roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Martins?
There is another issue with, uh, school transportation. We've had all this discussion, uh, there's a transportation issue of the students, Fall River residents, that live on the banks of, uh, Saudi Pond. Those kids may or may not need transportation. I'd like to have the superintendent address that particular issue as to what's happening with the, the kids that, that attend, maybe attend Tiverton High School, or maybe transported to Fall River Schools or someplace else, as part of a transportation issue.
Lieutenant, would you like to weigh in?
Sure, um, this, full transparency, I can carry it, 365 pounds easily for a couple reps, but in this case, uh, I haven't been able to close the door yet on the MOU with the, uh, Tiverton Public Schools. Very close, we have a document, uh, we've spent all our time this week, all of our time, you can ask a couple of school, school committee members that actually came in this week to see it, all of our time on the, this transportation issue. I have an MOU with Tiverton, uh, I've worked with the superintendent, we got the, uh, a price point reduced, uh, and as far as I'm concerned, and hopefully, once we have the blessing of the committee, um, that, uh, we will proceed, uh, business as usual for the, uh, families and students on Saudi Pond Road. Uh, it, it does make sense to maintain the, uh, the historic agreement, uh, that those , uh, students, uh, attend the Tiverton Public Schools. The superintendent and I and Tiverton, uh, have a, a very, uh, fair, uh, deal on the table, and I'm, um, uh, we're going back and forth on a couple minutia pieces, but, uh, I'm feeling, uh, very good, and I'll have that, uh, document, uh, complete and final, uh, shortly. I've been, uh, I've been in contact with at least one of the families, uh, I'm not gonna mention their name, but they've been very patient, and, uh, I know they've reached out to you, and I talked to them personally the other night at the school committee, meeting, and, uh, and, uh, I told them not to worry, uh, we'll have this deal done, and, and, uh, and I'm anticipating any issues.
Though, um, right at the present time, although there may be expensive budget, uh, of busing, but you don't, it's certainly not gonna be the scope of what we previously spoke of, but, uh, you don't have any approximate value, approximate cost that might be associated if transportation is needed.
So, to maintain the historic agreement that we've had, but we'll actually formalize it, 'cause there's never been anything in writing, we'll have a price point of, or tuition for those students, and transportation's covered by, uh, that district, not our district. So, there would be no cost, Mr. Martins, the only cost is, is if we didn't maintain the historical relation, uh, we would have to transport, uh, those children, uh, to the Fall River Public Schools, which is several miles, uh, away. But I'd like to, uh, continue, as I said, I've, I've had a really good negotiation, uh, in terms of, uh, back and forth with the superintendent, and, uh, I feel confident that the price point will make sense, uh, and that, uh, the families that live in, in, on that street, on that side of the street, remember, it's one street on one side, it's Tiverton Row, and the other side is, is Fall River Public, uh, Fall River, City of Fall River, although the entirety of the road is encompassed by Rhode Island, um, I think we're gonna have a, a good, a good deal very shortly.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
May I just add one more thing? I do wanna appreciate the members of the committee that have, uh, advocated, uh, to make sure that, uh, this is something that, uh, is important, uh, to us as a community. I don't want to show that the, uh, the families are, uh, not forgotten, and, 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 and they've been great, so thank you for your advocacy.
Okay, next, uh, item for discussion and vote is the unfilled vacancies for the FY20 budget. Is there a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion to approve has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion? Mr. Aguirre?
So, I, I believe this is titled unfilled vacancies, but at the last meeting, we were talking about it being new positions as well. So, in the budget, whatever item, so I, I don't know if the language needs to change, but the goal of this is to have our principals and superintendent work on recruiting people now and locking them in as soon as possible, so, uh, I brought this up because I do think it's a very important issue, uh, to the schools, to get the best people that we possibly can. I'm just not sure if we need to put any money on it, are we good with, uh, this is to the superintendent, probably, is it, you're good with, uh...
This is cost neutral.
Say it again?
Cost neutral, this, you said put money on it?
No, no, what I'm saying is, we're, uh, we were talking about the vacancies for the new positions, and then there was a complaint about, uh, we're being a little below what's approved so far with the state budget and all that. Do we need to put a number on this, or you're good with just a blanket? I'm good with a full thing, because I think we'll have plenty of money.
I'm, I'm good with the full thing, and it's, it's anticipated openings pending final budget, but the, and I appreciate your effort on this, uh, committee, uh, committee man Aguirre, it's to get out early to start building a pool. So, this, if vote by vote to now, would allow us to, to post tomorrow and start building that candidate pool, but we still wouldn't be hiring until we have the final numbers.
I would like to make an amendment to the motion, that, um, we offer the superintendent up to $500,000 of line items to lock the people in without the anticipation of the budget. So, the reason why I would wanna do that is because there's certain positions that might have more relevance or more importance to the district than others, so that if the so that if the budget in the city council and the mayor doesn't get done till July, June thirtieth, or potentially further, and it just keeps on going down, or the state budget, I want to be able to give you, Mr. Superintendent, the authority, because I do think that we have certainly at least five hundred thousand dollars of new positions. So that'll give you the authority to say, you know what? Position A is something we need to lock that person in, signed, sealed, to do it. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion to give you more flexibility to bring in the best people we can.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Seconded, with discussion, Ms. Hetzler?
All right, is, is that something we can handle, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, I appreciate the vote of conference on that, thank you.
Okay, on the amendment to the motion, roll call please, just the amendment.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrera?
Yes.
Okay, now, on the full motion as amended?
On the motion, please, discussion?
On the motion, as amended, Mr. Martins?
For discussion?
For discussion, go ahead.
All right, the positions to be filled, are those the ones that have on the budget indicating as TBD, to be determined?
Yes.
It is, okay. I was going over that, and most of them I agree with. However, right now, there are four. These are all at Dersie. I think the title is Administrative Manager. There are four of them. There's also a TBD that says Administrative Manager. Why do you need five administrative managers?
Those aren't new. Those aren't new.
Yeah, those aren't the new positions we're talking about, Mr. Martins.
They're not?
No.
Wait a minute, they're to be determined, that's what I just asked, and you said yes?
Oh, I'm sorry. So those positions exist in the budget. The new position was a request of Dersie this year in the budget, that I included in my budget presentation. So there's four existing, there was a request for a fifth, and that was included in the budget request. I have not, we have not posted that position yet. But we would now.
Okay, I guess the same question then. Why is five administrative managers needed? At first, the original back when, it was worded, and I've gotten to quite a heated discussion. It was worded such that there was one, but it was never indicated that there was one per class. One for the school, but there was never indicated as one per class. So, okay, now you got four. But now you want a Dersie, wants a fifth one. What do these administrative managers do?
We'll answer those questions for you right now, Mr. Martins.
Thank you.
So I believe it was four years ago that the school administrative management, manager position came to Dersie High School. It had already existed in several elementary schools and middle schools, I believe. This is an office support person that works very closely with the vice principal. They handle some of the lower level conduct, they track attendance, they track conduct, they, they handle some walk-in business when parents come in unannounced. They, they fill a lot of gaps in the operation. These are people that have a bachelor's degree, they have a higher level of performance, and it's a critical, it's a critical need. The new, the new, the one new position that, that's before you, that I believe this committee already, already approved, at least in concept, is, is for the main office. We have a, a school with two hundred and fifty employees, two thousand students, and I have one clerk to run my main office, and she is amazing. She works probably, she has the output of two or three people. This position would give me more support. This position would help me through the building process that, that is taking a lot of my time. This position would support me in getting ready and being completely compliant and, and involved in the NEAS process that you're well aware of, that we're about to undertake in the next two years. This position would help me in all of the, the accountability steps within the turnaround plan that is really eating up a lot of time, that is taking away from having eyes on the classroom. So this, this is going to, this person's probably got more than a full-time job waiting for them, if, if it goes through.
All right, just I suggest that you look at the other schools, as I did, unless the title is something different, but no other school has an administrative manager. Unless it's under a title that's different than those words.
In Fall River Public Schools, or you're talking other districts?
No, in Fall River Public Schools.
They're called SAMs, Mr. Martin, school administrative managers, and there are several in other schools.
There are several in other schools.
There's one at Henry Lloyd I know of right now, and-
Just point of order, we're talking about the unfilled vacancies. We're not talking about positions that currently already exist. So I, I am going to move the question along, unless it's specific to unfilled vacancies. Now we're talking about positions that exist already in the budget. You still have the floor, Mr. Martins?
No.
No. We're looking for monies. I think in some cases they're overstuffed, but I yield.
Thank you. Further questions on the motion? No, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrera?
Yes.
Next item is discussion, vote to approve the school year nineteen through twenty, FY nineteen through twenty change of bell schedule. There were some modest, modifications we, we had that year. Looks like, looks like the Dorn School, Spencer Board and Dersie, superintendent, you want to weigh in on this?
Yes. First and foremost, we came before the committee the other night, and the committee voted to, to move to tiers. There was some public input that we put out the week before. We received about twenty-three calls, about fifteen of them were about Dersie. And, and the other emails, which were about two, that I received from some parents at Dorn were upset with the, the total number of minutes that Dorn was moved. We went back and looked, based on feedback of the committee that night. We've spent two and a half days where this was not finalized until today. Because of the construction at the high school, and Spencer Board and, and Dersie being right next to each other, the movement of the high school to get to that specific point that we wanted to move them back to is unfeasible because of the, there was essentially a four-minute window between the pickup at both schools at the end of the day. That would be hugely problematic, given the construction. What we're planning to do is, under this proposal, is I'm asking the committee to go back and revote Dersie High School to its original time, revote Spencer Board into its original time, so we have that split. And then, in two years, once we build a new high school, I'll come back to the committee with a recommendation on the high school at that time again. But for this year, that's what I'm asking for. The second is, we really, really had a hard time trying to, to really work on Dorn, but we were able to get to a place where we shaved thirteen minutes off the start time. So we were able to shave thirteen minutes off the start and end time as a compromise. It's the best we could possibly do. We're only talking about three buses, and they're not full buses at, at Dorn. So, yes, it's unfortunate that, you know, we had some parents say, well, we don't even have transportation, but we have to move the time. I appreciate that, and this time is as good as we could get. We did, we didn't say no, we went back to the drawing board, and I think we delivered. But if there are families that are upset, that, we'll talk to you, and we'll figure out if, if there are some other things we can do. But this is the proposed recommendation for tonight, to allow us to get to the tiering that Ken and his team worked so hard on, the bid specs.
Mr. Coogan?
My, I have one simple question. On Talbot, that's actually just adding time and learning, isn't it? We just added, yeah, we didn't, that's not really a bus issue, that's a time and learning for the school, so that's-
Yeah, they're extending by thirty minutes.
So, one, two, three, four, so actually, five schools changed their time. The, the largest one would be twenty-five minutes at Dorn, and the smallest one was Laterno. You just swung that three minutes, so that's the total, and that does minimize the impact a little bit. I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Corey?
Mr. Superintendent, on, on the times for Spencer Board and Dersie, I appreciate you guys vetting the process as closely as necessary. With the construction company, is there an understanding that, that maybe they halt deliveries or their truck activity when schools, you know, in the morning and in the afternoon?
So, so we've already, in a short period of time, have had, I think, a two hundred and seventy-two concrete trucks, when you think about total scale, that have been through. We have weekly construction meetings, and at those meetings, we've been very clear about hours. Suffolk Construction and all their subcontractors have done a great job, I think, of managing the expectations. And our owners' project manager, Left Field, is really holding the hard line on, on when things can be dropped off and when they can't, based on not only Spencer Board and, and Dersie, but also looking at the whole continuum of where the routes are going, when they're coming in and out with stuff. So that also includes BCC and Bishop Connolly and Tansey.
Yeah, it's a pretty complicated route system right there, with all of the schools and the college and everybody getting out, and so, no, I appreciate that, that, that's been vetted. On the Dorn issue, I want to reiterate that I know you paid very close attention to the phone calls you received from parents, and you're working at revised times there at Dorn. Would the vans that we have be a help if there's issues moving forward?
So, it's a tough question, we've vetted that. And the vans that we have are going to be helpful in a couple situations, but in this, this is about a substantially separate special education programs, that the kids live in many different places, and the vans aren't big enough for the numbers. So the vans carry, what, can seven? Seven. So we're looking at, it's, it's more like fifteen to twenty on each one of these other smaller buses. The vans aren't big enough. So we'd have to get more vans, and then the cost with more vans versus these other buses, the buses make more sense from an economic standpoint in terms of doing that. So, again, this is transportation-driven, I'm not going to hide that fact. But the moves are necessary for us to get very efficient into a tiered system, and I'm, I'm, this, this is a monumental advancement for the school system to get to tiering, because it gives us a lot more flexibility as we move forward.
Yeah, which is why I think we're all here tonight. This is a crossroad that we haven't really had to explore until we get to this point right now, with all of the costs rising and all of the tiering going on. I appreciate the efforts. We're here tonight for special purposes, but I appreciate the efforts moving forward, trying to address it all. And it's very complex and complicated. I appreciate the work on both sides. We need, we need the vendors, and we really appreciate their service to us. And I know that we're working to refine our services for them, so I'm glad that we're here tonight working things out. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Agia?
So I have a question on the Dorn. The, the school, why, why would students get bused to Dorn?
I just explained it's substantially separate special education programming in that building, that students get transportation.
That's it?
That's it.
So, there's no ELL students in Dorn anymore?
Nope.
So, when people get transported, it's for that reason only?
Three buses.
If somebody's, doesn't live close by, what's the, is, it's a choice?
They provide their own transportation.
That's what I'm saying, so it's a choice at that point, whatever the-
Yes.
Same distances and stuff, so we don't transport any-
No.
Any regular student there. As you know, I voted against this the other day. I do think, I appreciate your comments about the early morning daycare that's offered. Do you have any further info, when you've been doing analysis of what that looks like?
So, right now, there is no early morning daycare at Dorn. Well, there is, I'm sorry, there is. But we're also, the doors will be open in a reasonable time, that if, if the families are dropping kids off, it, within reason, there'll never be a child standing outside.
Who is it, if you don't mind?
Ms. Ponce, she's a former principal. Yeah. And, you know, the, if there are issues, and I, and, you know, I've, I've made friends with many parents by just talking to them about their concerns and saying, call me. You know, there, there's, like, I'll give you another example. Let's say, you know, eight, eight thirty-three, the original one that you guys voted the other night, there were some parents like, we can't do that at all, period. But those, you know, perhaps that family lives in a different school zone, and a different school's time may meet their needs differently. And I would work with that family to say, okay, well, what else can we do? And we'd look at options, and we'd solve it. So any family that has a hardship, all they have to do is call me. We've been very respectful and, and, and working with all of our parents, and we'll, we'll continue to do that.
Who runs it, do you know the daycare? Is it a private, or is it a-
It's an office parrot that runs it.
But it's run by the district? It's in-house?
Uh, so, let me explain this to you. So, early morning programs are run by us in our buildings, and then there are other early morning programs that are run by other agencies, but ours, in our buildings, we run it.
May I, please, through the chair, just ask Ms. Ponce to come up to the podium to ask a question? Thank you for your input over there, just, so it's a, the morning one there is run by the Fall River Public Schools?
It's school-based.
And how do they, do the parents pay?
Yep.
And, I know you haven't been there in a while, but do you have an idea what it is? Is it a, is it a heavy cost, or is it almost like a cost neutral, just enough to pay the-
No, I, I, we didn't, we didn't make money on it. I think, I, when I left, it was two dollars an hour. They pay.
But it's run by in-house, so if it was run by a different agency, they would dictate the-
Right.
At those schools, they dictate who, who gets in, who gets paid, and-
Right, there are a couple of schools that do that, but Dorn's, we just set that up because there was a need at that time.
Right. And, and your experience, the kids used it?
There's a few families, there's, there are a few families that use it.
All right. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. With that being said, I'm, I'm still not comfortable with this whole process, so I'm going to stay consistent with my vote, but I would ask that you look at the options, because when we look at the schools that changed, and not only Dorn, I think any school that changed, and I appreciate your comments that you're going to work with families and stuff, if there is a need for some budgeted money to say, you know, we can suppo, help support some of those programs in these schools that are affected by this transportation, I, for one member, would be happy to, to vote in favor of those type of things. So just to weigh in on that, that, that is an option, if that is an option, I would support it financially with a vote. With that, I'm just going to be consistent in my note vote, I yield.
Thank you. Roll call.
It was not seconded.
It was not seconded. The motion's not been seconded.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrera?
Yes.
Okay, any new business this evening? Superintendent?
Yes. There is one piece of new business regarding a contract that we did not know about in time that needs to be approved. That contract is the Center for Responsive, Center for Responsive Incorporated. It's a responsive classroom course trainings for elementary and middle school that's happening this summer. It's an operating budget contract service total of sixty-two thousand dollars. The, of that, twenty thousand is coming out of gifts and donations and, I'm sorry, forty, twenty thousand is operating, and forty-two is gifts and donations to the local banks and the Chamber of Commerce.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Superintendent, is this something that is urgent, that has to be here tonight?
Yes, time-consuming.
Thank you.
Time-consuming?
Time, not consuming.
Time-sensitive?
Time-sensitive. I'm hungry, I want to consume something.
I don't want to say.
Took me two hours to get here.
There's been a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrera?
Yes.
We have the new business? Okay, we do not have a reason for executive session this evening, due to the fact that the transportation discussion-
I do not. I do not have a reason. The reason why it is time-sensitive is because at the same time, I'm requesting that the school committee accept a donation on behalf of Assistant Superintendent and Dagan requesting forty-two thousand dollar donation from Bay Coast Bank to fund the two cohorts of the responsive classroom.
Motion to accept?
Motion to accept donation has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrera?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?